Let's stand and have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come to you today, this week, as we prepare to celebrate the July 4th weekend and celebrate the independence that you have granted to this wonderful country. We just thank you, Lord, for the United States of America. We thank you that we have an opportunity to serve in the capacity that we serve in here as employees of the county and of the city. And we just pray, Lord, that you would daily give us wisdom, guidance, direction, and most of all, safety for our first responders. Lord, we just have several important items on the agenda, as we always do. We just pray for your direction. In fact, we turn the whole agenda over to you. Again, we just thank you for this day, and we just give you the praise, in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for the record, today is the 27th day of June 2022. It's just after 9:00 a.m. We're gathered up for our final meeting of the month of June. Item number one is our time for public comments. If anyone would like to address the court on a non-agenda item, this is a good time to do it. Otherwise, you may address the court when we get to the item that you're interested in. Then I will move along to a couple of sets of minutes. We'll take them one at a time. Item number one, two weeks ago, our first regular meeting of the court on the 13th of June. Have a set of minutes to approve, if you are so ready.
Make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Parchman to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Any comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we gathered up a couple of days later, on the 15th, for a short meeting. We have a set of minutes there as well.
Make motion, approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the June 15th, 2022 minutes by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Report from our commissioners regarding what they're working on in the way of roads. That's item number four. Commissioner Parchman, I'll start with you.
We're still doing side cutting, trying to get it finished up, and we got started pretty good on our mowing. Here recently, started on, working on County Road 1362, been replacing lots of culverts, getting ready for ditches, and cleaning it up, getting it ready for chip seal. So that's going to be our next big project.
Thank you, Commissioner Fitch.
We changed the cross covert out on 2910, and we finished all the ditches and installing culverts on 1070, and we're going to chip seal that tomorrow. It's about four and a half miles road. And then we've been mowing. We got the West New Hope area and around Marshall Springs, we're out in that area now, and get a chip sealing done, so tomorrow will be a busy day.
Is that an all hands on deck today?
Yeah.
Yes. So all precincts?
That's about a day's worth.
Okay, good deal. Good luck on that project. Commissioner Applewhite.
Well, we finished up, we put an oil seal on County Road 3365 on Thursday, and ever since then, we've been picking up trees, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that blew down or fell down. And we're starting back mowing today, and I'm 30 on the chat Argo, and we just got to catch up. We're going to get some oil sand in and start scavenging some places on 3365, get ready to chip seal.
When do you think you'll chip seal, July?
It's first, somewhere, 1st of July.
All right. Commissioner Parker.
We finished up Thursday with our mowing, our precinct. We got all of it mowed and finished it up. Went out, John took the distributor truck out and sprayed for Dana and him on Thursday. And we have got, have been, have installed some culverts, still doing our side cutting, part-time guys doing our side cutting and all. And we, the last two weeks, I've got 50 loads of oil sand in that we're fixing to start scavenging roads, just as soon as, as soon as we can get, get, you know, everything else done. We're going to help John off tomorrow, and probably Dana whenever he gets ready for his seal coating. And then we'll, we'll get on ours and try to do some scavenging stuff this summer.
Great. All right, thank you. Item number five, this is our bi-monthly report from Chief Larry McCray, and this should have been on the first meeting of the month, and I failed to put it on there, so we're a couple of weeks late. Chief McCray is here, and he's been here several times to do this. He's given you documentation to kind of go along with what he's going to report to you. And the idea behind these presentations that we began, when we began, end of last year, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Is so that all of us are as equipped as we possibly can be with the information we need to help us formulate a new city-county fire contract here that will occur in the weeks ahead. And it's important that we understand what the capabilities of our own volunteer fire departments in conjunction and in cooperation with the city of Mount Pleasant. And we've already had one preliminary meeting regarding the fire contract, and we're going to discuss that more in the next agenda item. And we have our city manager, Ed Thatcher, here with us as well. So again, the purpose of this particular agenda item is for Chief McCray just to kind of give you an update for the months of March and April. It, of course, lags a little bit behind so that he can put together this information. So Chief, I will, in the future, we haven't actually formally formed our fire protection committee. That was a concept that was brought up at our joint meeting with the city council. Will that entity serve to disseminate information like you're doing today? Will you still want to address the commissioners' court? Where do you see this morphing into in the months ahead? Any way we want to do it?
Either way, I'm good with either way you want to do it.
And the, the fire committee that we talked about, just so that folks listening to this will know, will be made up of, will you run down those for me? We've got two members of the court. We decided that the county judge, whoever that is, will serve in one of those capacities. Commissioner Dana Applewhite has agreed to serve in that capacity. Who are some of the other folks? We've got a couple of the volunteer fire chiefs.
Jerry Ward with Trial Lakes and Marcus Williams with Cookel is the two volunteer chiefs.
Okay, two of our chiefs that will sit at the table at this committee? Yourself?
Myself, city councilman, Galen Adams and Tim Dale, city manager, Michael Reeve, which is our finance director, she's here. The county judge-elect was going to also serve on that, and I think the commissioner, one of the commissioners is, not McCollum. I can't remember his name.
One of the commissioners?
Yeah, the commissioners, that's running for commissioner. I think he was going to sit on it or not. That's what I'd heard.
Jody?
Jody Mitchell, yeah.
Okay.
Set's on from the county.
Well, that would put, that would put three of us, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the more we have, the better from the court, but again, that'll be up to the court to decide. It'll require a public meeting if more than, if three of us or more are there. For the time being, we've got myself and Dana Applewhite will serve. Now, we're certainly, I'm wide open to any of our commissioner-elect sitting in on that meeting and our county judge-elect sitting in on that meeting until transition is made the first of the year. That kind of, you know, brings them up to speed.
Yeah. Barbara, I don't know if she was going to sit on it or not for the county.
If we can get her to do that, that'd be great, yeah.
I think that's it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Going to the packet that I gave you, the first part there shows, you know, we have a chief's meeting monthly. That, the first section there shows the attendance at the meeting in March. We actually did not have a March meeting. We were out of town. The, you can kind of see who's making the meetings and not. Some of them, some of our departments are not having anybody attend, and then there's one or two that has a rep that attends.
And they can either send a chief, or if the chief's unable, they can send a representative, another member of the department to hopefully bring that information back to the chief.
It really needs to be somebody attending that, that has, you know, authority to make decisions or, you know, occasionally we have those where we need to get input from the departments, but, you know, most of the time, it's if you can just get the, come get the information, get it back to the department. The next section is the volunteer membership and training. That lists all the volunteer firefighters on the departments. The ones in yellow are career firefighters. The ones that are in the brown or burnt orange, those are the ones that have made 25% of the calls or more. And then each column, if it has X in it, that shows they have got the training for that particular subject. And then to the far right column shows the year to date for 2022, training that they have received. And as you can see, there are a lot of openings under the different subjects to be trained in for many of the departments. The next section is the, the training that we provide monthly to all the VFDs, county-wide In March, we did InstaCommand, and we had 23 out of 91 for about a 25% attendance. And then in April, we did Wildland. Again, there was 22 that showed up, which is about 24%, which is, you know, pretty low, actually.
And that can include the professional firefighters that work for the city that happen to be members of that?
No, this is, all the numbers there on that page where it says like 5-star, 2 of 18, that's just their membership. So these are just members of the VFD. And it could be some of those members that are our career firefighters, if they attended. The pages behind that actually show the ones that did attend and what subjects they did attend, or what sessions. Then the next section is the VFD training sessions. It's broken into a couple of sections. The first one shows the training sessions at the VFDs for 2022. The chart at the top of the page shows the, the number of trainings, sessions that they had, the hours, actually, the number of hours that they had at each training session. And then the one under that is the subjects in the contract or the agreement that the VFDs have with the, with the county on what subjects they would train on, focus on, and as you can see there, that shows what training has been done in those different subjects by the different departments. The page section right behind that shows the training that the VFDs conducted at their fire departments from March and then, and then April. And you can kind of see the number of members that showed up for each department based on their numbers.
That's the number of members or that's the number of training sessions?
The, like under March where it says department attendance, 5-star, 11 of 18, it means that 11 of their 18 members respond, or were at that training session.
I guess I was looking at this one first.
Oh, yes, sir. No, sir, that's, that's ours. That just shows, you know, in the, in the agreement the county has with the VFDs, they're supposed to provide 20 hours of training, and that's just kind of showing you what's the hours that have been provided so far.
Okay.
And then the one behind that actually breaks it down into what they've trained on in March and April. Like if you look back to the, the one you just showed, Judge, like for Trial Lakes, they didn't train any in January, they didn't train any in February or April, but in March, they trained for 11 hours. So, you know, they had three training sessions that month. Which again, it really doesn't specify as long as you get their training in, whether they, you know, do it in a month or spread it out over three months, as long as they get their training in.
Okay.
And the document behind the, where it says training conducted at the VFDs for March and April, the documents right behind that breaks it down into the different fire departments and who attended in each department and how many hours they got. The next section is the volunteer firefighter response to incidents. And the first part there, the first page, actually has a breakdown for January, February, March, and April. And as you can see, we started out in January with 107 members, then we went to 97, then to 93, and down to 91. And actually, at our meeting this month, the 91 went down to 88. There was three members that left the department. So the VFD response and numbers continue to decline.
Do you get any feedback at your chief's meetings as to, and I'm sure you bring that trend to their attention, do you get any feedback? Is anybody honest enough to speak out and say, well, let me tell you why this is happening that we can learn from, that we can make, change the way we're doing things? Are we making it tougher and are we making it matter? I mean, what, what are we maybe doing?
Really not. I mean, we've talked about the training and stuff, and everybody, you know, everybody agrees that the VFD volunteer firefighters need training. And, and again, the volunteers, they can pick and choose what they want to be trained in. They don't, they don't have to be a fully trained structural firefighter. If they just want to, you know, drive the tanker, shuttle water back and forth, we can provide that training. If they just want to do fire ground support, we can do that. If they just want to be a wildland firefighter, fight grass fires. But as you can see from the training, there's, you know, support is kind of what they're doing now, is changing out air cylinders and this, that, and the other. But, you know, getting them to come to the training is again, it's time, that they have to be the ones dedicate the time. We can provide all the tools and the trainings. We talked about the online training. They're just, same old deal. You can lay the horse to water, but you can't make them drink, and that's kind of where we're at right now.
Well, we did make a significant change in policy in the fall, where you made a statement and that you really didn't want untrained volunteers, or anybody else for that matter, at these events because it could get them injured. It could even get somebody else who's fully trained injured if things aren't done correctly. Did that move cause this? And, you know, are people making a conscious decision? Well, if, you know, if I've got to be trained and I've got to take my time out to go get trained, I'm not going to show up to as many of these, and I'm just...
I haven't heard any feedback from any of the chiefs saying that. The numbers really haven't changed that much. I mean, as far as people showing up at the fires, it's about the same. But again, you are correct. We don't want you to come if you're not trained to do a function on the fire ground for the exact reasons you just said, which begs the question of why did you join, join the volunteer fire department if you don't want to get the training to help people?
Okay, thanks.
The document behind that actually breaks it down into the calls for the, made by the departments. As you can see, up through April, Taoco has made 100% of their calls, Trial Lakes 95% of theirs, Argo 95, NorTex 92, 5-Star 76, Cookel 68, and Sugar Hill 26%. And when it says, you know, they get credit for response, that means at least one person and one truck showed up.
So whether five or one shows up, they're given, they're given credit. It's not a percentage of their total department?
No, but the, the pages right behind that break it down into department and members, and that shows the participation by the members. For example, 5-Star only had two people that made more than 25% of the calls, and the rest made less than that. So it gives you an idea of, of actually what we're, what the VFDs are able to provide as far as manpower on a consistent basis, which again, is steadily declining. The section after that is the overlapping incidents. Again, those are calls where we are on a call and there's another call that comes in at the same time, which again, is going to, at some point in time, going to be a problem where we can't respond to the other call. The document behind that actually is, it shows the status of the, testing the equipment and SOPs that's required by the agreement signed between the VFDs and the county. That is updated from what you've got under the hose testing, where it showed Taoco's didn't have any documentation. They have provided that. NorTex has got their pump tests, and Taoco also has their flow test for their SCBA's. But everything else in red, they have not even pleaded that for 2021, and we're moving into 2022. Again, these are requirements of the agreement, but I guess I would say if there is no incentive or consequence for adhering to the agreement, they're not going to do it. And so far, there's been neither consequence or incentive for them to do it.
You know, we put our fire agreement, volunteer fire department agreement in place with the county, what's it been, a year and a half, year?
Yeah, I believe it was the end of, year before last, yeah.
And as far as I know, we have not reprimanded or denied any payment money to anybody. Is, does, is the presence of this contract, is that hindering volunteer numbers? Is it required training? In other words, do we need to examine ourselves and make any changes that would increase our numbers? And if we do, does that really, does that really increase the numbers that we want? I'm struggling to figure this out. We see this trend continuing to decline, and it's, you know, it's, it is bothersome, and it does make me wonder if the county has taken action here that has afforded participation. I don't, I don't know.
That'd be a question to ask county chiefs. They might give you better feedback on that. I don't think any of them disagree that, you know, again, as I've said before, years ago, the county chiefs said, yeah, we need training. Even though the state of Texas does not require a volunteer to have any training, it just stands to reason, you don't want anybody showing up that don't know what they're doing, whether it's volunteer firefighter or, you know, working on the roads or what have you. You don't just throw somebody out there, give them a shovel, or put them in a dump truck or a backhoe and say, hey, go fix the road without some training, you know? Even though they say, hey, we're here to help. Yeah, let me get on that backhoe. I've, I've driven a backhoe before. Let me do that. You wouldn't put them out there on a road crew, would you? So the, the chiefs in the past have said this is, you know, we need to get them trained. We've said we'll train them. They've got to come get the training. It's up to them, you know? I know there was a statement made a couple of meetings ago, you know, that I ought to be the one requiring them, making them get the training. I can't make them train, you know? They're volunteers, as we've said, you know, I have no authority to say, you're going to show up every Thursday night and go get your training. You know, even the county chiefs can't make their members come get training.
I think you've done the most effective thing that you can do to require that they get the training. You've said, don't come to an event if you're not trained. I mean, to me, that is making them get the training. You can't prevent their name from showing up on a roster, but you can keep them from being in harm's way or putting you in harm's way by telling them not to be there. So, yeah, you're right. You can't chain them to a desk and say, you're going to watch this video, or you have to come. I mean, there's, there's nothing that you can do. There is no other kind of punishment or repercussion other than, we don't want you here at the, at the events. I mean, if you're not going to come to an event, do you really want to be a volunteer firefighter? So I think you've done that.
That's, again, like I said, that begs the question of why did you join the volunteer fire department if you don't want to respond and help people? And if you don't get the training, you can't do that, so I don't know.
Well, I don't, I don't know either. In my heart, I believe that we're not causing the decline in, in numbers, but I always encourage somebody to be honest enough with me to say, you know, if you would stop doing this, we would come to more training, or we would come to more events.
Like I said, the training is even at their own pace. It's not like, hey, we're going to, you got to show up Tuesday and Thursday night for four hours for the next six months to get your training. There's, there's no rigid schedule. It's, here's the training, here it is, do it at your leisure. I can't make it any more simple than that. Or if it is, I don't know how to.
Commissioners, a lot of data here. You have any questions for chief? Comments?
Actually, I have one out of my pocket.
Yes, ma'am.
The fire agreements were signed mostly in June of '21. Of course, with the exception of Taoco, because that runs back to '16. The requirement is for training and runs, for example, if you do the training and runs in October, that information is due to my office by November, by the end of November, so it gives plenty of time to get that in. No one has, well, one, one department is by one day in Cookel. So in April, they didn't get their April ones and all that information in that June date till June 1st. But other than that, but no one has missed that. They've gotten those in as required. The other thing I want to call to your attention is the, the monthly, I mean, the annual report. 5-Star was the last one to get theirs in. They got theirs in today. That was early June, January 31st. I was told that they were having trouble getting that done because some of their participants were body fire, assigned to be out of county body fire. But in any case, that information is all up to date. So I can't speak to any of the other requirements within that contract, but I can tell you that those departments are working to get that in. And I think that 5-Star would have better talk next year now that they know I'm going to provide any of that money until the beginning.
And I see your emails asking for that, and I appreciate it. But again, we haven't denied anybody any money as a result of their failure to meet those deadlines. I think we've been very lenient. You know, that's always a tool in our arsenal to, well, you don't get a check, or you missed this month's check. We haven't done that. And nor have we denied any money for failing to meet certain percentages of, of training or attendance at a, at an incident. You know, whether that becomes part of what we require in the future, I don't know, but I know everybody up here on this podium is probably hates to do that. That begins a, that begins a new precedent when you start to do that, but at the same time, we're continuing to pay out the same amount of money. We've asked the chiefs to put together a plan whereby the departments that are the most regular get the maximum amount of money, and those that don't or are not able to participate... most regular get the maximum amount of money and those that don't or are not able to participate don't get the same amount of fixed money. And the idea there is, you know, if you're not coming to training and if you're not showing up for events, why should you be given the same amount of money towards your budget that somebody else who's making considerably more runs? I, I do think that that's fair and I'm looking forward to seeing what the chiefs can come together as far as what's a fair way to compensate or a more fair way that, that more adequately compensates the active departments and less compensation for those that are unable to attend. I don't have any more questions right now regarding this report. Any commissioner have any questions or comments regarding this report?
I would add, I am concerned that if the predictions are correct, moving into the August, July, August, if the rain stopped like they're predicting, the grass fires are gonna pick up and that happens in the early afternoons when we don't have any help from the VFDs. That concerns me.
And it, and it should, it should concern us and, you know, part of this exercise is brought to the forefront, you know, my appreciation for the professional firefighters that work for you and the fact that the money that we pay as a part of our contract is, is warranted and very much needed. And so as we formulate that new document and look at significant price increases that will help fund additional staff, equipment, facilities for you, we need to see what, what generates some of that need, not only growth within the city, within the city limits. If, you know, the county still needs that fire protection and if we're, if we're continually losing folks that are able to respond when you need them to respond, we're increasingly more dependent upon, upon you. And I, I think that these numbers do reflect that and I think it's, again, a, a sign of the times. Thank you for the report. We appreciate that. We're gonna move on into just kinda morph into this next item and that is to discuss in item number six, the renewal of the fire protection contract with the city of Mount Pleasant with possible action. And again, our special guests today are city manager, Ed Thatcher. And Mikhail, what is your official title to make it sound is Director of Finance? Okay. And she's the one that helps?
Except she wasn't elected.
She's Barbara's equivalent. And Ed and I had an opportunity to talk the other day and he volunteered to come. I didn't force him to be here, nor did I force Mikhail to be here. I thank you both for coming. I know that you're both very busy. Six weeks or so ago, we met with the city council there in your chambers and discussed and y'all had put a lot of thought into this. I could tell and made some suggestions as to where this fire contract should go, at least financially speaking, in the days ahead and, and showed us a suggested percentage of the budget of the city that the county ought to be responsible for. And you even generously gave us the ability to ramp up into that dollar amount over a three or a five-year period. I sent you some questions that Barbara had put together and commissioners are here to ask you possibly some of their own individual questions as we move closer to formulating that document. So before we get into any specific questions, maybe I'll just turn it over to you or unless there's a commissioner that has a specific question, I've got a feeling you've got a bit of a prepared speech and so, you know, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor and commissioners. I think when I hear this today and also when we, Larry and I and the council were trying to deal with the fire department, I think that old famous Texas saying, you know, the definition of frustration is putting a Baylor grad into a round room and asking them to find the corner. And I think that's the way it went.
Something like that.
Yeah, something like that. And, and my thought is if we keep doing the same things we've always done, we, we get the same results, kinda thing. So I think what we tried to do in, is to have a different approach where we have a fire committee for county, city committee, you already talked about the members, decision makers that, that meet as needed. It could be monthly, it could be once a quarter in the budget time. It might be in summer, it might be monthly. And, and what we do is we look at the budget and we deal with, during the summer, we deal with what kinda things we're planning to hear, what the chief says, we need to add some more people and why and how to do that. And then, and then those decision makers go back to their boards, commission and say, this is what we're talking about, get input and we can come back in two weeks and talk about it again if we need to get the budget here. So that not only do you know what's in the budget, but you have some input of what, how we can solve the problems we have. I, I personally think that the amount of money that, that volunteers are getting, and I don't know what it is, I know it's nowhere near what we get, but, but it's not the amount of money that would maybe motivate people to rush into a burning blazing building to, to fight a fire, I think, especially if they're not trained. I've been in several cities, several departments where we've had maybe four or five firefighters that were afraid to go in. And when they came, they ran around, hooked up hoses and looked for the other trucks coming over the hill, kinda thing. It's, it's a, it's a problem. So I think maybe redefining. The other thing, I think, it's like, I always wondered, if somebody doesn't like school and they, they mess up all the time, then they kick them out of school. I'm thinking that's probably a bad motivator. I've always thought that. And, and they've made changes in that school that the state has, but I'm thinking in terms of, you take their money away, if they're not motivated now, they're really not motivated if you don't pay the department. So maybe the answer is to redefine what they do and, and not require that, they need to be trained or taught what their job is when they get there, not just stay away if they're not trained, but you're, you bring the water or you do this, whatever's on the scene they can do and not require them for a little bit of money from the county for each department that they all gotta be there and rush in and fight fires, save lives. There's something each can do. And, and the volunteers, as you know, there is American, there's apple pie and motherhood and, and they do, they live in the community they serve in. I remember the days I talked to chiefs back in my rural town, juniors and seniors in high school, if there was a fire, they got to leave and jump in their pickups and run out and, and get in the way, but that was the American way. We didn't get trained, we just had to, we were lifting stuff and helping and we were helper guys. So I'm thinking that that's one thing this committee could talk about, especially with the volunteer chiefs on the board and talk about what can they do. Still may need to some training, more videos than not, but back in the day when I first started, there were 18, I don't know if they, probably 21, but they were graduated out of high school, they all had pickups. They wanted to be trained, the departments would pay them to go to A&amp;M, they'd spend two weeks in the summer of 100 degrees learning how to fight fires. They loved it. They, their trucks had volunteer fire department on, they had a Kojak light, they, and they just loved it. They carried their bunker gear. It's a different time now and that's not happening. And so maybe we could redefine what they do and still pay them. And again, I don't know that you'd lower their money because again, the, the money they're getting is probably not up to where they ought to be rushing into fires and doing that. But they can be part of it and, and that's what I'm hoping that this committee would do. One thing we talked about is that we would, we would set all these hard things aside and not, not try to result that in the contract approval, but say this committee would be part of that contract approval, the, the amount of money split would. But then we would get together and work on these issues. Of course, we work on the budget every year and they would work on how to solve these other problems. And that's what I think having, you can't do it here and we can't do it in our council meetings, but, but we can do it maybe together in a, in a meeting. Are there any questions on that? I can go talk about the, the other questions we have here if you want. I think Barbara did say that she pointed out in the questions, she said that we had said we were getting a million 14 and, and I think she said we're, we're getting 994, 492. And it was my mistake because I'd forgotten, I guess I didn't realize that the amount of money we were getting when I got here included the amount that y'all gave the chief. And so, because it came to the city ran through. So the numbers I used, the chief's amount for being the county.
Emergency management coordinator.
Has been subtracted out. So that means that 114, million 14 down to 994, that would be correct.
So that's the discrepancy explanation.
That is. That is. And, and so the other part of it is the, the percentage of, we believe, we feel that a 40-50 split would be appropriate.
40-60.
What did I say? 40, 40-60? I'm not even a Baylor.
Was that about Baylor?
And so, so, and, and the big part, y'all know the big part about a fire department is it's like insurance. You gotta, you hope you never need it, but you gotta pay and train and have the equipment. And if they're sitting there eating Blue Bell and watching the color TV, that's, that's a good thing, I guess, but we have to pay for it. So, so it's not about the number of runs or the number of things, it's about the cost to have them there. And of course, you do look at, at number of runs, that's important, but I just point that out. We, we said that based on the one point, anyway, our, our number, 1.14, 1.14, it's about 30% participation to 70. That, you take that chief's money away, that pulls that back down to about 29%. So it's, it's negligible. So we were proposing that we go to 34% this year and the next year we go to 37, 3%, and the next year we go to 40. So that would be a three-year phase in. If, if we, if we do a five-year phase in and it's just, takes two more years to get to 40 and it'd just be, it'd be 3% this year, I guess, to get us to 32, then be 2% a year after to get us to, to that, four more years. So it's, it's, we call it a five-year phase in, but actually it's four years from now when we'd be to 40 because, or two years from now when we'd be to 40 if we did it the other way. So, so of course, you talk to the finance people and, and this finance people say, we need to be on the three-year phase in and this finance people is, is okay with a five-year phase in. So I think this committee can come up with that or if you need a number, we can just decide that here and right now and you go fix your budget and we go do our budget. The other thing, I'll just, I don't, chief hasn't heard this yet, so this is surprise to him. There's other ways to skin a cat and there's been other, I mean, you gotta get out of the box and, and look and be creative. So let me just throw out a, a thought that I've had in other places. You don't, instead of volunteers, you use what we call auxiliaries. And that is in the city, we have workers in the utility department and in both the water, wastewater and water, in the public works department, work on streets, in the parks department, we have workers. And what if we ask them, are you, any of you interested in being a firefighter, totally, totally trained? And part of, when you're, when you're at the meetings with the firemen or when you're firefighters or when you're at the fire, you're in the fire department, but day after day you're in the other departments doing your job. If there's a fire that happens, you got your bunker gear with you. You don't have them all work together, so you lose a whole crew, but you had them through the city and they respond. One out of a three or four or five man crew, one takes off. And the, the good thing about that is we would pay extra money for training and also extra money to, to get them to be, to be a firefighter. And they would be fully trained and be just like the other firefighters. But we're already paying 25 to 30% of their salary because they're on the city, they've got healthcare, they've got retirement, they've got all that. So we don't have to hire a whole new group of people to do that. And then we pay them, pay them a stipend, don't pay them an entire firefighter salary. So you can actually get more people, maybe 25, 30 more. We have 170 employees. Of course, none of us in this, in the building would be eligible because our jobs are too important to, no, I, I, teasing, strike that off the record. But you know what I'm saying? These guys out there, they're young and strong backs and, and maybe always trained to be a firearm fighter. It's possibility we can come up with 25, 30 more people. They could be called out on overtime because they live here on the weekends and so forth, but they would be available whenever the, whenever the, as long as they're working for us, whenever the fire bell goes, they would respond under the chief's, under the chief's direction. And the other thing, I think there were some questions about our guys going out of town two weeks at a time or whatever to fight fires in El Paso or California or flood down in the south. And I remember I brought the chief in by the way and said, how can we be talking about we need firefighters, we need more people, but we'll take five guys in a truck and go down, out of town for a couple of weeks? And he explained to me that, that, that we are staffed and we staff at a minimum level. All right, now I think it's 10 for two fire stations. So you have four on a truck, which is kind of a requirement, and, and then you have a supervisor that goes on the scene and to every fire. And, and then you supplement that if you have to. So that's, that's what we have at each station. So that, that, whether it's a county fire or a city fire, that number doesn't change. We may have to call people out on overtime, which we do, but, but the minimum staffing never changes. Taking a few people out, say guys that live in Farmersville or Sulfur Springs or Greenville or wherever, and they might go, but they're difficult to call out when a fire happens and it's, they're difficult to call out on overtime because they can't get here before it's already contained. So, so he explained that there, there's really not a, you know, drop in the number that goes to the fire whether they're here or not. He takes three or four or five and go. The other thing is the reimbursement is at 100, it's up more than 100%. They get paid, we pay them their salaries, but they, they send their time in and we end up paying their salary at, at the federal government level that they're there and then we get that reimbursed within three or four months after they get back. We submit it, gets paid, they pay us, if we take a truck, they pay us for the truck. Now, taking a truck is wear and tear on the truck, so there is some expense there, but they pay all the expenses and then they pay, they send us a check for using the truck.
And they is, they is the federal government?
Federal government.
Okay. So that, that answers a question that I know some of us had is how can we, you know, should the county participate in those expenses? Well, the fact of the matter is, there may be a timing difference, but eventually you get that money paid back. So you're, you're square when it's all over with.
Yes. And I have, huh? Yeah, and chief says, we're actually to the good and, and of course, again, using the truck, the equipment, we get paid for that over and, but there's still wear and tear on the trucks that we gotta do, but, but if.
Do we have to pay for the maintenance of the truck?
Yeah, yeah, maintenance and stuff. I think that if we calculated, we thought we're actually making money above what we actually needed. And I don't know how we'd do that, this committee would have to sort that out, but wouldn't have a problem with sharing that back to the county on the same percentage, but I think it'd be negligible. I don't think we'd get a lot of money extra maybe or do.
Is, is there a?
Yeah, they pay for the benefits and everything, they pay at, at double time or, and so forth and so.
Is there a county truck in the fire station that y'all take, when they leave, do y'all put a county truck in the fire station? So where's that, where's our money? What I'm talking about, we paid for the truck and it, you know, where's our benefit of it?
Do we have a truck that they bought?
Yeah, we have a truck, like Five Star, that was used there. When we pay our debt, we just replace it with one again.
I think we're just trying to get to a place, when I first came, we, in fall of 19, we had to buy another fire truck. Y'all paid 300,000, we paid 300,000 and bought half. And since that And since that time, it's when I've been, I and the council, the judge, we've been talking about trying to formulate a percentage, so that, because, because we get into exactly what you're saying, Commissioner, is, we had a county fire, and, and the county truck didn't come, we took a city truck. And, like, we put the county truck on the north side, and we have a south side fire, so it has to go further. So, we kinda wanna get out of where we all own the trucks, 60-40, and they go wherever they're needed. And I think they even started doing that after a while, they said, "Well, we can't just take the county truck to the county, depending on where it is, we take whatever truck's the closest." And so, so there's some of that. But, we kinda wanna get out of that.
Because that takes away from the county. When they got a county fire, that takes the truck away from the county.
I'm not following you.
Well, when you, say, if we got a fire in the county, and the city has the truck, we don't have a county truck to go to the fire.
The truck that we're using belongs to Five Star. There's like 19, roughly 19 brush trucks in the county right now, and half the time, they, they don't respond anyway. So, it's just sitting in the station most of the time. So, when we take ours out, we bring it to Central, so we do actually get to use it. So, even though it belongs to, you know, the VFD, which it belongs, this one belongs to Five Star, but, you know, it's gonna be sitting in the station anyway. They've got three, I think they have three brush trucks. Most of the departments only have two. So, again, it's just sitting there, not being used. So, it, it's not, it's not taken away from the, from the VFDs being able to respond to anything in the county.
The other thing I would say is, that's another thing this committee could, could address about, about, I mean, one time, not too long ago, the chief called and said they're wanting us to go out west somewhere. And I said, "No, let's not do that. We're talking about needing more, so let's not." So, they didn't do it. But, maybe this committee could address that. And there may be a way that, hadn't thought about this, we ought to ask the question, maybe the federal government ought to buy us a truck to use every once in a while, so that when we go, we can take their truck. I, I can't think of any fire department I've been in that has extra equipment like that, you know? So, you try to go help your neighbors, and you try to go help a bad situation, when you got the burns going on. I know our guys were in California, I don't think they took a truck then, but they sent some guys up.
Well, I, I think that the, the county is basically purchasing services from the city. The city is, by and large, the primary provider of fire protection, not only in the city, but in the county. For us to be telling you when you can go to an out-of-state, out-of-city event, I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's our business.
Yeah.
So, you, you've explained to me that it's not, you're not asking me to pay for it.
Right.
Not that I might be willing to pay for it anyway, but you haven't even asked us to do that, you're getting reimbursed by that. I think that you can, I, I think we could try to come up with the, what is the perfect way to compensate the city? I don't think we could ever achieve a formula whereby we got exactly what we paid for. But, I do know this, I do believe this, I do believe that the joint cooperation between the city and the county is by far the most efficient way to provide fire protection in this thing we call Titus County slash Mount Pleasant.
I agree.
The day that we separate and divide, we will each have to have more numbers. One plus one, I mean, 10 plus 10 is gonna be a bigger number than, as long as we're working together.
Right. We think, we have about 30. We think that the county on your own, if you fought, would need about 30. But, we think it's somewhere between 40 or 42, or something like that, would be what we ought to get to. But, again, there's ways of doing that, maybe, without just adding more bodies. We do have some proposal in, we hired two more this summer, and we're looking at maybe hiring three next, next fall, next year, to get up, just so, just those will cut our overtime down almost to, not to zero, but almost to zero, and it's $400,000, $500,000 now. So, so, keeping that minimum. But, again, we're gonna look at this other alternative and see if we can solve some of these problems, and maybe come up better than we would--
That's a very interesting idea. I don't know how, what the chief feels about that, but, but there, again, if you can, if you can make incremental expenses rather than full positions, heck, there might even be an opportunity within the county for--
Yeah.
--willing and able county employees to do the same, to do the same thing. I, I don't know what that would look like. You know, I appreciate you all testing it first, but maybe someday, there'd be a way where we could do that, too.
Yeah. When you think about it, most firefighters are, ours are 24 on, 48 off, and they're either in another full-time fire department, doing 24 more, or they've got another business they're doing, so they're, they're working several jobs, I know, or two or three. And so, the idea was, that maybe we could come up with something else.
And that was something that you told me last Friday, that I had no idea, that a good number of the people on the Mount Pleasant Fire Department payroll don't really live anywhere near here. They're coming from out of town, as far away as the Metroplex.
I don't know that a good, whatever a good number is, but we've got two or three or four that we don't call in, because they're too far away, they couldn't get your time up to--
Yeah.
There was a day when you said they had to live in the city, and that was unconstitutional, and we said, "You have to live, live in a reasonable," and now, we can't even do that, because how do you define that, you know? So--
Well, there again, I think it's a sign of more efficient use of the talent that's out there. You know, bring them in, they have those, these strange schedules, 24 on, 48 off, and maybe they wanna make some extra money, so on their days off over there, they're, they're coming over here.
And we, we benefit from their training they get at these other departments, the bigger departments, so it works. I know in the, in the, in the winter of 21, you, if you can remember back that far, 18 months, the chief asked two shifts to come in, actually, and, and that was reimbursed by the federal government, too, but they came in, so that if it was too bad to drive, we needed them here, they, we kept two shifts there through the week, and, and luckily, didn't need them. We had a couple of fires, but we didn't need them, but, but they were there if we did, and they were reimbursed. The other thing, we said we'd get, I tried to get this contract, a draft on it, and it said, "Get attorneys." I called her last Thursday, and she said she was working, and I said, "Well, step it up, because that, we wanna get together and work on that." But, that doesn't preclude us from getting this committee together, meeting each other, and start talking about budget stuff.
Yeah.
And we tell them what we're looking at, and that kinda thing, and then--
Yeah, I think, I think we're ready anytime.
I think we are, yeah. So, all the people are appointed, so. Very good. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
I have a question. The city, this concern made, the city's ETJ has gotten bigger over the last 10 years. The county has lost a lot of acreage and land due to annexation. That's my concern, is the cost of the contract has gone up, but we're losing land, so, I mean, I don't know how y'all feel about that, but that concern--
I know, we're doing an annexation now, that's gonna annex our, it's gonna go north of the water tower on 271, and it's land luminat had. There's nobody being served out there, there's no, it's mostly undeveloped land. We're, we're doing engineering now to run the water line up 271 to serve it, and a sewer line also to, to serve those developments, so that it's looking like 1,400 new homes over the next, I don't know, I wanna say 10 years, but once the water and sewer's there, it could be really fast. And so, you don't see us out, we're, we're precluded as of 2018 or 2019 from annexing, unless people ask to be. And the only people that usually ask us to be are those developer, undeveloped land, that they need water and sewer to. Or, if there's some people on the edge, and they want water and sewer, they'll ask. Mostly, it's sewer, that's what's golden, is the sewer. So, if they can get sewer, we don't, now, here, we've been letting people hook on, that aren't in the city, on the sewer and so forth. That's usually a big no-no, because, because the reason they live outside the city is so they don't have to pay the taxes and so forth. And, and once we give them sewer outside, there's no, there's no incentive for them to come into the city. Most people just live around, that, that, out in the county, just around, get most of the services that we're providing without paying for them, that's my theory, so. But, so, we, you won't see a lot of annexation unless it's vacant land, and they're asking for it. Back before this time, city would say, "Hey," and I know this city did a lot of that before I got here, and I, I looked at where they went, and I was wondering why we went up there, and we weren't prepared to put water and sewer in those areas. We've got a lot of vacant land around, that's annexed, that doesn't have utility. So, that, we're working on that right now, with our plan, future plan, capital improvements, to, to get water and sewer to those areas.
So, is a fair response that primarily, when you annex, you're not gobbling up hundreds of county businesses and residences? You're primarily going into areas that are--
Being requested.
For, for future development, that, yes, they'll be developed within the city, but they're not right now areas that you're providing a lot of fire protection to.
Right. In fact, if I was a big business, like, like Mid-America, I've always wondered how they could be outside the city. But, you know, they, there's no water. I mean, you're on the, you're on a, a utility district, but there's really no fire protection, and there's no, a lot, not a lot of water out there. So, so, most of those businesses that are out there, probably small, but don't have any need to come in. Most big ones would wanna come in and be on water and sewer, and they can work on 380 tax agreements, so they don't have to pay so much taxes. But--
You know, and, and again, I, I make that, the analogy, that the cost of fire protection, wherever you draw the line of city versus county, is gonna be the same. And how you, how you allocate those monies between the city and the county, again, the two combined together is still the total. And everybody in the city is paying county taxes. So, the allocations that we make put more of the responsibility, cost-wise, on those that pay no city taxes and pay only county taxes. And it relieves some of that burden from the person that lives in the city that's paying city and county. And I think it's, if, if done right, it becomes a more proper allocation of fire protection expense to somebody that lives in the county and pays no city tax.
Yeah. I, I appreciate that, and not many county judges would see it that way, and I, in my experience. But, I'll tell you that, that we look at the number of households, the number of the population, and we have about 17,000 in the city, and I think you have about that outside, it's about 34,000 or 5,000 in the county. I don't know the new numbers, so it's about 50-50. It takes longer to get to those, and then, of course, it's tough when you don't have the water out there. So, so, yeah, there's some concern, but I don't think we're gobbling up a lot of people, and we won't be, for sure, unless they come and ask us to do it.
Yeah. Fire protection in the county costs more than in the city, because of the distance you've got, you just said it, because of the distance, and the infrastructure's not there to provide that unlimited supply of water.
Yeah. And I think, Commissioner Applewhite and I, we've talked about, I think there's a, one street or so out there where we come, we butt the county line, city line, and there's questions about if it's over here or over here. And I think we can, we need to get back together and solve that thing, and we can do some work out on that area. While we're doing this annexation, if there's any question, we may wanna plop that line on the other side of the, of the right of way, so we can take care of the street.
Barbara, are there any immediate questions on here that would help you today, that are in this list of 16?
My, my only question is that there's some detailed financial issues here that I would like to know the answer to before we sign the contract. I understand that we may not need to discuss that today, but I do have some specific questions.
The contract actually begins, ends when? September 30th?
Yes.
Okay. Not, not calendar year, September 30th. Okay.
But, keep in mind, we have to have the proposed budget approved and filed by August the 15th, so we'll do it on August 15th.
And I think that there is a possibility that the number that we plug in there is our best estimate.
Right. We can certainly do that.
And the finalization of the budget will more than likely occur before the finalization of this fire contract. But, we will put in a dollar figure that's adequate, give or take, to, to do the job.
And that's why, that's why I think getting this committee going, and Barbara's part of that committee, and it'll be like having two engineers looking at the same problem, talking about it, we'll have two financiers looking at it, it'll be interesting, but, no, I think it'll be fine. I think we'll be able to come together and--
Yeah. And we're, we're ready to start that, whenever you would like, and we can delve into some of these questions at that time.
What we normally do at the city, normally, we do it in May or June, we waited here to the end of June, but next, tomorrow night, we, we try to sit down with the council after the election, talk about our budget that we're in, and, because we're getting ready to prepare the budget, like you are, we're prepared. And we ask them, "What, what are your parameters?" In other words, no new taxes, or lower the tax rate. The last three years, we went below the effective tax rate. And so, I think with this, with all the requirements that we have, and then, of course, the legislature put that 3.5% ceiling on us, that we, like, this year, we think we're gonna have to go up. I know we're gonna have, and I've told the council, that some of them are still saying, "We're, we're gonna try to cut it," but I don't, I don't know how we can. But, we're gonna meet with them to get that direction tomorrow night. We'll talk about some of the big items we need, but not, it's not a line item thing. And then, we take that information, go, we'll go put the budget together this summer, and then somewhere in, in August, end of July, or first of August, we meet with them, go over the proposed budget that's balanced, and, and then take it to them. I think they're, the, it has to be approved by the end of September, and we have to, I don't know if the new rules, we have to propose something in August, maybe, but it seems like that they make us propose our budget earlier and earlier, but the central appraisal can give us our numbers whenever they get ready, so that's always a challenge.
Yeah. We're in the same boat, Barbara's under the same crunch as well. So, the sooner we can begin talking as a committee, it'll help McHale, it'll help Barbara, to--
I'll call you, maybe, after tomorrow night, which is already here, so, anytime this week, the end of next week, we'll set up a meeting and maybe--
At least get it started, and let everyone meet each other.
Sounds good.
Thank you both for coming. Appreciate you.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna head out to the funeral.
All right. Appreciate you.
Thank you. I hope you thought I dressed up for you, but I didn't. Normally, this time of year, I'm like him, I wear a red tie until the budget's balanced, and then I move to the black tie, but it's funeral today.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Okay. I did have with possible action in there, and this was drafted at a time when I didn't know how quickly we were gonna move forward on that. I knew it was kind of a shot in the dark, but I made it an action item anyway, so therefore, I would ask that we take no action on item number six. We've, with the minutes reflect, that we discussed the fire protection contract, but it is not to the point where it is in a written format with agreed-upon details to execute that contract. And therefore, we'll take no action on item number six. Okay. Item number seven. Considering possibly approve an agreement for microfilm storage with Avenue or Avenue Government Record Services LLC for the continued storage of the county's microfilm canisters. And Joan, I'm gonna let you discuss the details, but apparently, we've had a service that we've been getting for essentially free, that now, we're going to be asked to pay for to store microfilm. And I was assuming it was a box of, I was assuming it'd be a shoebox full of microfilm, but Joan says it's, it's half a room full of microfilm, so.
Yeah. I got, I was contacted by Avenue a few months ago, and so, I'm again trying to figure out how they got our-- to figure out how they got our film. And so, anyway, in between '72 and '74, there are several references to Southern Microfilm. When I looked into it, I found out that Southern Microfilm was an Orleans-based company. They had a Houston part, part of Houston. But Southern Microfilm was bought by Sonny Oates. He's changed hands with it and merged with other companies. Anyway, since I've been county clerk, it has, it went from Southern to BRC, then to ACS, Xerox, Conduit, and now Avenue. So, in a space of less than eight years, it's changed hands four times. Avenue want me to pay to have it stored, which it will amount to about $1,500 a year. I checked with the Texas State Library, the records, they did an inventory for me, the records are permanent records, so therefore they cannot be destroyed. So, I, she wanted to go back two years when they bought the company. I talked her down to just one year, so we're beginning this year, and the contract will be a five-year contract.
Where does this microfilm actually reside?
What now?
Where is this microfilm? What building, what city?
It's a facility on Harrington Heights in Dallas, Texas. So, it is in a Texas-based storage facility. It's climate-controlled in a vault.
And have you ever, since you've been here, had to request a canister for somebody to look at something?
No, I haven't, but, and I think everything is in paper, but when I checked with the Texas State Library, since it's a permanent record, we can't destroy it.
And we've gotten it free for years. We've had it stored at no cost.
So, I guess we can just count that to our benefit.
Oh, okay.
Because for that, the storage and filming began in, I think, 1972. It goes all the way back to the fire of 1895, the records that were microfilmed and stored. So, this is a lot of Titans County history.
And if we said, by golly, we're not paying this, they're going to say, come and get your microfilm? They'll destroy it?
They will destroy it, yes. And as custodian of the record, that's really against the statutes of Texas law. I really can't allow that to happen. I'll either have to go get it, try to find a place to put it, which I have no idea where I'll store it.
Who's got room in their county barn? How many canisters? Is this something like a 55-gallon barrel or something?
More than that.
No, there are 942 canisters.
They're like photo canisters?
About like this, about this big.
Yeah, that's a lot. It'd fill our whole vault up, you know?
So.
$1,400 sounds like a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
If you say we've, if you say we've got to have it.
Well, and I've checked with other county clerks, and this is a good deal. The price is right. I mean, it's not unreasonable at all, and I'm asking-
That's $100, $120 a month. That's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, it's for a climate-controlled vault, that means fireproof, so.
I'd charge her more than that.
Little kind of storage like that.
All right. Since it is a contract, we didn't want to just casually sign off on it. Joan is asking for that. It's reasonable. I've got the agreement right here, and I'm ready to sign it if you'll approve it.
Make a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve entering into this microfilm storage agreement with Avenue Government Record Services LLC. Motion Fitch, Second Parchment, all in favor, say aye. I'll sign this. There's a signed copy. Okay, did I say all in favor, say aye? I did? Okay. Item number eight, considering possibly approve a federal purchasing policy for the county. And we've talked briefly about this. You were sent a 10-page copy of some very interesting reading. And this really is promulgated by new requirements that we will have to meet in order to be sure that we're doing things right with our ARP A funds. And some of this will be a little bit more onerous requirements that we'll have, but either way, we've got to have a policy in effect so that, one, you can check the box that says, yes, I do have a procurement policy that exists within the county. And so, this is a fairly in-depth document. If you, as a result of reading this, if you have any questions or comments, for Barbara, I'm sure she's read it two or three times, do you have any reservations with this document? I mean, not that we really have any choice. I guess we could modify it as we so chose, as long as we met the minimum standards.
There's actually some modifications that I've made with Mark Taylor, and he's approved those. And with your permission, I'd like to kind of go through some of that.
Yeah, please.
Make sure. The first thing I want to tell you all is that it's the review process, how this is going to come about. I think it's important that our public knows that it's not something that I have done with the grant administrator, it's something we've all involved in. So, I'm giving you just a little history. On May the 24th, we met with Mark Taylor, Taylor and Associates, and remember, the court approved Taylor and Associates to manage this grant for us. We would require them to process this program, and Mr. Taylor sent me this procurement policy that's 16 pages long. I reviewed it and developed my first list, and it was 29 questions. I fit that to you, asked you to review it with those 29 questions. Then on June the 7th, I would open that in detail with Mark Taylor by phone. He's made the adjustments. And then, y'all had to approve the seatbelt policy. That was one of the items you approved on June the 13th. On Thursday, Mark Taylor and I worked through the final draft that is for your consideration, and I sent you that final draft. So, today's the date, I'm asking you to approve this procurement policy. So, I have a couple of things for here, or there's more than a couple, there's just the things that I think that it's important that you're aware of what's in here. And I'm sure you've read it, but the reason I'm going to go up with these things is so that every elected official knows the requirements, and so that our public knows the requirements. Purchasing is going to be different with these funds than the purchasing that we do currently. These are much more stringent, there's a lot of strings attached, and things are going to take longer. So, with your permission, and I'll leave on to you just the highlights. The general procurement standards are based on two federal regulations, Code of Federal Regulation, Section 200. That is very long and involved. I'm familiar with it because I was required to follow that with schools for education grants. So, that's why I told you all upfront, there's more requirements. So, I'm just going to hit the highlights basically on each page. There are foreign highs, ethical requirements, so we will have to have a standard of conduct that is partying conflict of interest. That's at the back of this form. And one, I'll send that to every elected official to make sure that they're aware of what the requirements are, because it's different. If it's local fund, someone gets you something of a minimum or a minimal value, that's a decision that you can make. If it's with federal fund, you can accept one sentence. It's very critical that you know that. All procurement will be reviewed by the county attorney, the county officer, and the county judge. The original word there was the criminal district attorney. I requested to take that out because I feel like that Mr. Colley has a very important role, not that John Martin's not, John Martin's here with us, and with his background and the CBA, he will be more knowledgeable of each requirement. So, that's the first thing I'm going to call to your attention. The fact that that's in there tells you how serious it is. So, there's one requirement that we will have to follow. If we're going to purchase anything, we're required to prepare a lease purchase alternative to see if we'd be better to lease or to purchase. We can purchase through, it's a governmental agreement, which is cooperative, that we already remember, so we're not a parent county property, we take our path. We're required to look at federal excess property, we're limited purchasing new equipment. It may be that they don't have anything that we want, but we're going to be required to look at that. If we build any buildings, we're required to do value engineering. We are required to only go with responsible contractors, and we have to consider their integrity, their compliance with public record, their regular tax performance, how they're enjoying the state, and then we're required to maintain records of all of those things that I just described to you. If there's any legal costs, the county will bear those, the federal government will bear those, Mr. Taylor and Gary Taylor will not bear those. Here's a, here's a, any contractor that develops or assists in drafting this specification, requirements statement, work or interpretation of it, or requests or proposals, will not be able to participate in doing the actual contract. That's a change from what we've done in the past. And simply, it does not apply to all of our purchases, only the purchases that we use as American Rescue Plan for. We're required to have written solicitations, and the county commissioners, I'm going to be bringing a lot of things to you for your approval. You're going to need to approve everything that we send out of that as we move through this process. So, there's a long list of things. If you want to purchase an item, we can no longer say we want Ford this or Chevrolet that, we have to say that brand name or equivalent. We leave out a Ford equivalent, then this deed is not being regarded. There's a lot of items like that. There is a section for a pre-qualified list of persons who are interested in acquiring or selling items to the county. We have something on our website for new vendors. We've had that since Parchment was new. You know, I mean, when we fly to do business with the county, please ask them to go online and fill that out. That will assist us in moving through this project. Not a requirement, but it is an option. Invoices for expenditures are going to be approved by the county commissioners and the county judge, looking for potential duplication of purchases and into my list. That's similar to what we do now, but in addition to your approving those invoices, you're going to need to consider, is this a duplication? Do we have this anywhere else? Do we have something somewhere else we can move there? Those kinds of things. Purchases below $3,000 are much easier. You can do that without soliciting competitive proposal, provided commissioners have approved that purchase. If it's below $50,000, then you don't have to have a formal bid, but you must have a bid in writing with some additional. Anything over $50,000 has frankly pages and pages of requirements.
Competitive sealed bids?
Yes.
Very similar to where we are right now, but this spells it out real clear.
Yes. And there's requirements about competitive negotiations. If we're not able to create a bid document because knowing what to do is hard to determine, then we can go with negotiations, because the specifications cannot remain specific enough. If we are seeking professional services provided by a degree, licensed professional, principally engineering, the county illegal services, there's different requirements. We're doing most of those now, but it's just that we're going to have to further document those things, and things are going to need to be brought to commissioners' court. There's opt for sole source, we do have those mapped in place already, but there's additional strict requirements. One of the items is that with any contractor submitting a bid, what we're doing non-competitive negotiation, thus got written proof of liability, insurance, and workers' compensation. And again, it comes down to contractor integrity, compliance with public property. If there's not a contract or something, we're not going to be an actual contract. For example, if it's under $3,000 or under $50,000, those are still going to have to come to court for your approval, even with these funds. Right now, we're not doing it. If it's under $3,000, you have money in your budget, we're leaving it under, you'll have to be approved. If we have a contract, the county is, it has to say that we can handle for calls at any time. There's also a fee in cancellation. There's a requirement to take affirmative action towards hiring small and large businesses, limited business enterprises, and labor surplus area firms. Mr. Taylor will provide us with lists. The way we'll meet that requirement is we will send our bids to those entities, give them the opportunity to bid. You can also have an preference for purchases of items within the United States. There's safety requirements, there's federal labor requirements, work hour requirements. As we move through this process, you will have to spell, start by our procurement system. If you don't want to do that, we can send this to the federal government and wait for them to get it back to us. That is, that's going to be a very, very long time. So, we will ask you to do that when it's time. There are bonding requirements. I don't know that we require bonds, but I'll say, if I'm here, we don't require bonds. If it's over $50,000, you're constructing a facility, you must have a big guarantee of 5% of the bid. It's also a performance bond of 100% of the bid, there's a payment bond of 100% of the bid. And then, there's a list of items starting on page 12 that must be included in the contract. The goodness is, Mr. Taylor will also prepare those contracts with John Martin, as our county attorney will need to sign all of those. The items that have to go in there are breach of contract terms, sanctions and penalties. If it's anything in excess of $10,000, there's termination, equal employment opportunity to date of expiration, which requires payment of proven wages, an anti-kickback requirement, contract hours, safety standards, overtime, the Clean Air Act, department extension, any vendor that we use. What we will not be able to use, a vendor who's been debarred or suspended by the federal government. The federal government provides a risk called system for award management sales, what we call it. If the vendor is on that list, we cannot pay them with these funds. Mr. Taylor also, so far as to say, if vendors on that list, it's best that the county not do that in any case, but we cannot do it here. There's anti-loathing requirements. No gratuities. May not accept any gratuity favor or anything of monetary value. No, no county, no member of the county government, no employee or designated agent can accept any of those. And that's the summary.
This is just a minor question, but look at that acceptance of gratuities. No county member, employee, or designated agent shall solicit or accept gratuities, favors, or anything of monetary value from contractors. Is that talking about contractors that we enter into with ARP funds, or we've got to make some changes, like not accepting PMS at Christmas time from that, that, or something like that?
My understanding is that this is only for American, for federal procurement.
It's only for this ball of money that we get and whatever projects we use, spend with that money.
However, that is within the code of conduct, so I think I need to make sure with Mr. Taylor because it is the code of conduct, so he's destined that I need to agree with every legislative commissioner.
I mean, that's the only item that I'm aware of.
Usually, purchasing says that the minimum amount, $50, $100, $250, those kinds of things, but for federal purchasing, it's none. So, I can tell you that when they say contractors, potential contractors, if anyone you currently have a contract with, anyone thing you might have a contract with. And I caution you, if someone that you did have a contract with is now decided to leave, so if it's within these lines, you don't need to do that.
Thanks for all the time you put into that.
Barbara, you sent email.
Barbara, you sent, emailed those to us, a copy of them.
Okay.
I hadn't seen it really.
I sent you two first.
Yeah, it's in.
I got one deal that I looked over and I think I've seen them.
I think you sent one on Thursday, but the first one I sent to you was on June 1st. But I don't think you can, you know, swallow that very well.
If anybody wants a hard copy, I'll give you one right now. Or she'll re-mail it, or I'll email it. Anybody want to tell Barbara where she messed up and fix it?
That sounds good. I make a motion to approve the purchasing policy.
Okay. Again, Barbara, thank you for all the time you've spent on this. It's a good document, and we knew that there would be more expectations of us. And it does make sense when you're spending federal dollars. I don't think this is any more onerous than it has been in the past when you were given federal government money. But nonetheless, we are going to pledge to do this and do it right. Thank goodness we have Mark Taylor that will assist us and Barbara that also does things the proper way. So I'm confident that we're going to avoid any conflict with the federal government. This is one of the first steps here. We have a motion by Commissioner Fitch to, what? A motion and a second. Commissioner Fitch, second by Commissioner Parchman to approve this federal purchasing policy for Titus County. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye. Item number nine, approve oral and written reports.
Make a motion to approve the reports.
Motion by Commissioner Fitch, second. Second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Our signature. Item number 10, consider and possibly approve the treasurer's report.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report. Commissioner Parchman makes that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item number 11, approve budget amendments. We have budget amendment number 21 for the fiscal year 2022, '23. There's three components to this. Two components impact both Precinct 1 and Precinct 3. The third component impacts the elections office. I'll go over these individually. First component, Precinct 1, we're taking $14,000 out of other road materials, and we are putting it into the gravel and rock budget. The reason to decrease these other road materials and increase gravel and rock due to reallocation of line items within that budget. So we're spending more on gravel and rock than anticipated, and we can afford to spend a little less on other road materials. $14,000, no new money. Precinct 3, we are going to make some switches, taking out some of the existing Precinct 3 fund balance to the tune of $50,000 and putting $10,000 into road oil and $40,000 into other road materials. The current budget amount for the use of fund balance in Precinct 3, as listed here, is the result of audited balances of $261,000 as of 9/30/22, less $17,500 set aside for contingencies, less $127,000 for the purchase of an excavator, and less $32,500 for the purchase of a drum roller, which results in the current fund balance of $83,958. So we can reduce that by $50,000 and bring it down to $33,958 to get you through the end of the year. The final component here within the elections office, we're going to decrease elections expense and increase software maintenance due to the annual increases in software maintenance contract. Another reallocation within light items of the budget here. $4,700 going into software maintenance and reducing the elections expense. So that is the three components of amendment number 21.
Make a motion to approve budget amendments.
Motion to approve budget amendment number 21 is made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Item number 12, sign pay orders and approve payment of our current bills.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Closing comments, if any. Commissioner Parker?
The only thing I've got, I had a guy that approached me, I guess it was yesterday, and he had been to a Farm Bureau meeting and give me some more information on it. I'm going to try to find out something else, but somewhere or another, it goes through the county, the grant does. And I told him that I would check into it if he'd give me the information, pick what I needed.
Was that Jerry Moody?
Yes.
Well, he emailed me the same thing, so he's talked to you about that? I didn't know anything. Did you know anything about that?
I heard a little about it back in February when we were at school.
Any idea how much that would be at the county level by the time it reached us?
I don't, I really don't. I'll check into it a little further, but.
And he said in his email, he had some ideas as to what we could do with that money. And just because I'm curious, what can we do?
The way he talked to me was that, from what they had told them down at that meeting, was that it could be used like to purchase traps or to hire somebody to come in and to help control the population. So just a little help for the farmers and ranchers that we've got that are having major problems with them, but it's grant money that's--
Is it as big a problem now as it's been in past years?
It's getting worse.
Getting worse?
Yes. So be something that we could look into if there's money out there that, you know, that we could get to help these folks, you know? I think it's something we need to do.
All right, keep us updated. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner?
I'm good. I just want to state that I still think that six forty contract is going to be a little steep. I just don't think it's the right time to be going up on anything, whether the company is and the way taxes are high and everything, cost of living is high. I just don't think it's the right time, but might be. I just wanted to state that.
Would you agree that, you know, and I certainly respect your opinion, do you feel like we're seeing a reduction in the amount of support that our VFDs are able to give, say, in the last five years since we did that contract?
I don't. My personal opinion, I think the volunteer fire departments are being fully effective. And I think that's the number one problem that I think is, I think that's worth sort of--
Okay.
Judge Lee, I have one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to remind you, commissioners, our current bids for road materials expire June 30th. So if there's anything that you need to buy this week that looks less expensive than starting--
My final comment, Barbara had asked that I put on this agenda to approve the contract for purchase of lawn and landscape maintenance as well as our air conditioning maintenance, and I failed to do so. She got bids. She will be able to show us who the low bids were. I will have that on the first meeting of the month. We had two bidders for the lawn contract, and it appears that there will be a change there. Either way, our current supplier of that service, JBX3 LLC, is that right? Has agreed to continue into the full month of July at the current price. His bid went up significantly, and we'll discuss some more of those details. But because of my mistake, and I apologize for that, he has graciously agreed to continue another month at no increase for that extra 31 days of service. And then we will also approve the AC contract. That'll be the first meeting of July. All right. If there is nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.